I will now call this planning commission to order at 7:00 PM on August 12, 2025. All citizens of the United States, please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country. And where is the flag located?
Right behind you, to the right.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Wilton, will you do the invocation, please?
Aye.
Let us pray. Our God, we thank you for the many blessings you have given us in this county. And we ask for your guidance in leading us in the utilization of these gifts that you have given to us. Christ's name we pray. Amen. Mr. Kelly, can we do a roll call vote for a quorum, please? A roll call.
Mr. Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Rouse?
Here.
Mr. Mead?
Here.
Mr. Wilton?
Here.
Ms. Minor?
Here.
Mr. Riddle?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All in favor of approving the agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it unanimously?
May I see who?
Um, Mr. Mead? I'm sorry, Mr. Mead, yes.
Yes.
She cannot, she could not see you. You voted to approve the agenda?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Is that what you needed, Ms. Kelly? Thank you. Okay. Do I have approval of July the 8th, 2025 minutes, or any edits or corrections?
No move.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All right, we have a second. All in favor?
What?
Aye.
Yes, sir.
Kelly, did you think there's changes?
They were, they were done before the meeting. Did all the commissioners get a copy of the changes?
Yes, they did.
We did. Thank you. Okay. All that approve? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
All right. Minutes were approved unanimously. We now have a public comment period. This public comment period doesn't have anything to do with the South Bay Haven Park. So any, we can discuss anything but the park at this point. And the public hearing will come up shortly. All right, I will now open the public, general public comment period. Speakers have a limited time of one opportunity of three minutes each. Speakers will start their remarks by giving their name and address. Speakers cannot assign their time whole or part to any other speaker. Commission members may interrupt any speaker for questions or clarifications. Materials submitted to the, for review, for consideration of the planning commission must be submitted through the secretary, and that is Ms. Kelly, right over there. If anybody has... All right, do we have any speakers signed up? I'm sorry, that's for behaving, Ms. Kelly. Thank you. Would anybody like to speak?
I'd just go south there.
No, no. I'm sorry, I jumped ahead of myself a little bit here. All right, seeing no one, we will now close this public comment period. All right, we will now open the public comment, the public hearing. Ms. Kelly, could you read the procedures for the public hearing? And the resolution also, if you would, right afterwards. And can we get Mr.?
Speaker, I will now read the procedures for the conduct of tonight's public comment period. Speakers excluding zoning applicants and staff are limited to one opportunity of three minutes each. Each speaker shall open his or her remarks by giving their name and mailing address for the public record. Speakers cannot assign time in whole or in part to other speakers. Commissioners may interrupt any speaker for questions or clarifications. Speakers' remarks shall only be directed towards the merits or demerits or other issues germane to the public hearing. Materials submitted for review and for consideration by the board and commissioners must be submitted to the recording secretary for entry into the proceedings.
Can you read the resolution, please? You don't have? All right, I will read the resolution. Bobby, is Bobby? I think he should read it. But I can read it.
I'm here.
Can you bring him up on the screen?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
We want to see you. We want to make sure it's you.
All right.
All right, and how about Mr. Mead? Is he? Yeah, that's Mead.
Mr. Mead's down there.
Mr. Mead is up. We don't see you, Bobby. I think you...
Yeah, I'm, I'm sharing. Let's see, maybe I'm not. Hang on one second. Let me get this stupid thing working. Can you see me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good.
All right, we have a resolution.
All right, resolution.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll read it to you.
Go ahead. You, you read it.
Okay, one second. All right, resolution 2025-22, whereas the Matthews County Board of Supervisors by formal vote has expressed its intention to locate a public park on a property owned by Matthews County and commonly known as South Bay Haven. And whereas Virginia Code 15 dot two dash 2232, as amended, requires that if a park is not already designated on the comprehensive plan, the Planning Commission is required to make a determination as to whether or not the proposed, proposed location of the park is substantially in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Be it resolved by the Matthews County Board of Supervisors that the Matthews County Planning Commission is, one, directed to make a determination as required by Virginia Code 15 dot two dash 2232, as amended, whether or not the location of the park at the property owned by Matthews County, commonly known as South Bay Haven, is substantially in accordance with the Matthews County Comprehensive Plan. Two, shall conduct a public hearing in accordance with the Virginia Code 15 dot two dash 2204, as amended, prior to making the determination as to whether a park at South Bay Haven is in accordance with the comprehensive plan. And three, promptly report the result, as well as the reasoning behind the result, for its vote, to the Matthews County Board of Supervisors.
All right, your staff report, please.
Okay, staff report. Uh, there's not much that we say. There, our, our comprehensive plan is pretty silent, but we are a member of two organizations. And let me explain those. Matthews County is a member of the Middle Peninsula Chesapeake Bay Public Access Authority that are known as the PAA. The General Assembly created the PAA to promote recreational public access through the Commonwealth. Since its inception, inception, I'm sorry, the MPCBPAA has provided support to the Middle Peninsula localities in acquiring and identifying public recreational access to bodies of water in the region. Several waterfront properties in Matthews County have been donated to the PAA by private landowners and for land for public use, including Matthews Heritage Park Site. Recreational facilities are not only an important asset to the low, local level, but also promote the regional and state tourism goals. Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation, better known as the DCR, provides policy and direction to the public and private sectors so they may better manage recreational resources and outdoor and open spaces. DCR helps locate parks and recreation departments through enterprise training and funding. The Local and Water Conservation Fund program administered through the Virginia Department of Conservation assists in the acquisition and/or development of public outdoor recreation areas. The DCR also provides guidance on management and recreational resources through the Virginia, Virginia Outdoors Plan, the VOP. The Virginia Outdoor Plan is a state comprehensive plan for land conservation, outdoor recreation, open space planning, and is applicable at all levels of government and the private sector. VOP receives input from public meetings, such as this one, for partnership with local and regional staff who help to identify the plan's priority considerations. At present, the Matthews Ca, Matthews County does not have an adopted public Parks and Recreation Master Plan. However, it is specified in the comprehensive plan that this is an opportunity for development of such plan. For, for use, use of waterfront land should be balanced to provide reasonable access points for the public and protection of the environment. According to the comprehensive plan, there are approximately 2,000 acres dedicated to conservation or parks, which is about 3% of Matthews land mass. That's all our comprehensive, that last paragraph is all our comprehensive plan says about parks.
Okay, I, I don't see suggestions or staff suggestions or restrictions in, in case the planning commission recommends to approve the park. Do you, do you have that? Or are you working on that? Or what's the, I mean, we should have that? Staff's recommendations? And?
My, my recommendation.
Or restrictions, if it's decided to pass it on up to the Board of Supervisors?
Well, that, that paragraph of the comprehensive plan kind of states our position that this is a great opportunity to create a plan, to develop some Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which we don't have. So in the absence of any information from a comprehensive plan, I would not feel comfortable or make any recommendations. There is no guidance on which to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Andrade.
Yes, sir.
All right, Ms. Kelly, has anyone signed up to speak?
Lisa Edwards.
Good evening. Is it on? Can you hear me?
Uh, don't, talk a little more and I'll let you know. Uh, no, we can't hear you.
Hello, hello?
Is that better?
Yes, okay. Lisa Edwards, 75 Millstone Lane, which is the end of South Bay Haven Road in Gwin. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. Comprehensive plans are broad sweeping documents, and towns and counties often have very lofty goals. Just because an idea may fall into very general framework doesn't make it a good idea. At the very least, the county should do no harm to the daily lives of its residents, and this project is widely opposed by all the surrounding residents on South Bay Haven. Although in theory, the proposed plan might appear to fit some guidelines and conform in some language, it is not a normal property that you can apply normal considerations to. It does not conform to the standards for approval because... The reason that we're even talking about this is that it's basically considered a condemned property by FEMA terms. It's flood-prone, it's ecologically sensitive, and it can't be considered like the other properties that the county owns and wants to develop. The plan warns about maintaining the delicate balance of development versus environmental protection, and this property is vulnerable to further erosion and to wear and tear, and no one has addressed the mitigation of the shoreline damage from proposed increased use. It would endanger the adjacent tidal pond, which is protected by restrictions, and could also endanger our oyster breeding grounds, which are just offshore. Words in the plan emphasize improving existing boat, dock, and ramp facilities instead of building new ones. In the plan, traffic and safety concerns are emphasized when considering a new project, and officials must consider the congestion in existing neighborhoods and maintain the residential atmosphere when possible. That's a big problem with this location. The plan notes that the island has more dense development pattern than the rest of the county, and no project should be carried out that makes density more problematic for the residents. The plan mentions development should be discouraged in high-risk areas, and it seems to me that a property that was in the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program makes it unqualified and nonconforming for that very reason. The plan repeatedly mentions the peaceful Matthews lifestyle and the need to protect it in the existing neighborhoods. Allowing this project to go forward will put that in jeopardy for the residents of South Bay Haven. We oppose this project, and we have already presented two petitions to show this. Gwin's Island never evolved with public access in mind, and that's the way it is with a lot of small waterfront towns, especially an island. Matthews County has more public water access already than surrounding counties, so please, let's fix those up first. It makes no sense to start another public project at this time. This parcel has always been a residential lot on a residential street, and it doesn't conform to development plans that would disrupt neighbors' lives and establish an attraction right beside our quiet homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we continue, can we have the online participants mute their mics, please?
You asked for it to be muted?
Uh, yes, unless they're speaking, it's kind of distracting.
Yes.
Mine is muted, so I'm, I'm fine.
You got, okay. Ms. Kelly, next speaker?
John Hall.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name's John Hall. I live at 831 South Bay Haven, which is adjacent to the said property. I've had numerous concerns ever since we started, one of which is the South Bay Haven is a very, very small residential road. And as, as you come down the road, when you reach Edward's Landing, it narrows down and at the, at the point of where you're going past my property, the road is only 10 foot wide, which is totally inadequate for more than a single-lane highway. So that, that is, you know, it's not adequate nor safe because the residents enjoy walking up and down and riding bikes on that road, and it's just, you increase that traffic, you're asking for trouble. The proposed park would be, you know, also, it's real close to my tidal pond, which is, I measured it, you know, and it was 16 feet from a tidal pond to the South Bay Haven property. So that was the main reason that the land ended up being condemned, because every time a pond would go up, it would just go right on in the house. So the issue is I'm having even now is the water drains off of that property, onto my property, going into that pond. So if you start having vehicles and stuff in there, it's a good chance that you could actually do some damage to the tidal pond, which is a habitat for crabs and minnows and juvenile fish and waterfowl, and it's very interesting. But the next issue that's, that kind of worries me is the, the land off of the beach is a mud flat with grass beds in it. You really can't walk in it because it's miles up. But if you have a lot of activity in there, it could, I think it could damage that ecosystem there, which is, is, you know, fish come in there and crabs, juvenile crabs, and all stay in there. And it is very, you know, fragile because for the last two or three years, we've lost a significant amount of beach from these storms that we've been having. I think I've lost around five foot. And that property there has also lost quite a bit of it as a beachfront. So adding, you know, these vehicles down there, which the ones now, when they come down there, they just park right on the shoreline, which should never be allowed. They should have put some kind of a sign up that says, don't pull down, have it drive back up down to there and, and fish off the beach. So I just see this being a total nightmare because nobody's, you know, policing it. Do y'all plan to have park ranges or something? If we have something like this, who's going to even police what goes on down there? So that concerns me. And, you know, you do have an, you do have a...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you.
Phyllis McCarron?
I'm Phyllis McCarron, 75 Millstone Lane, Gwin. I have spent some time reading the comprehensive plan for Matthews County, especially the part pertaining to Gwin's Island. Interpreted broadly, one might say that the projected park on South Bay Haven does fit the plan. However, there are many other details that need to be incorporated into the understanding of how this park would, excuse me, negatively impact the area. This property is a well-kept residential area with long-term committed residents. We are a community that values peace and quiet. Noisy traffic on the narrow road, litter, and other safety risks to bikers, runners, children, and pets are something we do not want. My understanding of the comp plan spells out that special projects, such as this public park, must not impact longstanding residential areas. Environmental concerns are also specifically addressed in the comp plan. This property is located in the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area, and all increased human activity threatens the integrity of the fragile shoreline. These are just two examples of ideas that are present in the comp plan that lend themselves to, to the understanding of negative aspects of developing this park. To bring the commission up to date, and I don't think we've talked about this before, a group of us are working to develop a proposal involving a possible transfer of the property to a conservation entity that would be held as open green space, honoring the floodplain requirements. We are awaiting legal advice and the county to assist us with contacting the right people at FEMA. We ask that the planning commission and Board of Supervisors postpone decisions on developing this public park until proposal details are finalized. Thank you for your attention, and we hope that you will make a decision that benefits both residents and the county.
Ms. Kelly, can you check? Let's see if that's, can everybody hear? The citizens? I can't hardly hear them up here. We're gonna make sure we get this recorded. So can we pull that microphone down and check it? Can you just check it for me?
Turn the volume up a little bit.
That'll be great. No, no. Is, is that a compromise that we're talking about here? Okay, all right.
Yeah, did a good job, too. Thank you. That is really loud. Okay, I need to get it away
from me. Okay.
Does this sound good to you?
Does this sound good to you? Can I hear you? Can everyone hear me loud and clear? Okay.
That's better. Okay, Ms. Kelly, next speaker.
John Lewis.
Yes. Mine works well, too. Mr. Lewis, good evening. All right.
Good afternoon. John Craig Lewis, 739 Tedneck Road, Port Edward. I, uh, I'm here in full support of public access anywhere in Matthews County. We really need it. Gwin's Island is a, it's a paradise. That's what everybody said, they had the campground and stuff like that, they come there when I worked there. They all said that this is an island paradise. So people that live on Gwin's Island moved there for a reason. They want it paradise. Public access is a great thing. It allows anybody to go anywhere that's public and be able to enjoy what it has to offer. South Bay Haven is a public road, it's got interstate maintenance, what, six feet from the water, so it ends at public water. It's been public access, in my opinion, my whole life, living here in Matthews. I've used it before myself. Now we've got property that's next to it. It's owned by the county, it can't be lived on, it can't be done much with, make a great park. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Next speaker.
Diane Congrove.
Hi, I've got a schoolteacher voice, so I don't think you have any trouble hearing me. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Diane Congrove, 754 South Bay Haven Drive on Gwin's Island. Like you, I've spent a few hours down the rabbit holes of the Matthews 2030 Comprehensive Plan, looking for some guidance on whether to develop the small residential waterfront lot on Bay Haven. The following four statements are quotes from that plan. Number one, the Public Access Authority, that you've already heard about, is working to formulate and implement a plan for Matthews Heritage Park, a waterside access site in the Moon area. Number two, there's a plan to recommend improvements to the East River Boatyard property for public access. Number three, the use of Matthews waterfront land should recognize the rights of private residential owners. And number four, Matthews should monitor maintenance needs at existing county-owned public access sites and improve where possible. I'm not familiar with the Matthews Heritage Park or the East River Boatyard, but I do enjoy the newly improved port fund with my grandchildren and Haven Beach, even with its challenges. I would like them to remain clean and safe, and it would be really nice if the public docks on South Bay Haven were monitored and maintained. I would like to echo Mr. Mead's sound advice from last week's, last month's meeting, to concentrate finances and manpower to maintain and improve the projects the county has started. That challenge falls well in the lines with the comprehensive plan, and it seems to me that developing a new park on South Bay Haven doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Merle Guy.
I think I can speak loud enough also. I'm Merle Guy, and I live at 779 South Bay Haven. I think I might be repeating a lot of the things the other speakers have said, but I'm still going to go with it because I feel very strongly. I live one lot over from the proposed park. I have tried to understand the comprehensive plan as it pertains to the lot in question, and I have these comments, very short. Number one, in the plan, it says limited boat ramp expansion unless a critical need is identified. Is this a critical need? Number two, traffic and safety concerns. South Bay Haven is definitely a safety problem already. It's too, it's not, it's too narrow. It will not accommodate large trucks with boat trailers using the road. Number three, I see that it has stated in the plan the need to protect the tranquility and quality of life in existing neighborhoods. That sentence explains every reason for our quiet and safe neighborhood to remain the same. And lastly, and I think most importantly, environmental impact on the waterfront. That is a very important part of this proposed project. There will be impact on the waterfront if this project is approved. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you. You have to send that, you have to send that up to the, to the secretary, and she can bring it to us. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak.
Hold on one second. Ms. Kelly, she wanted, can you pass that? Is it only one sheet?
Yes.
All right. Can you bring that to me? And then we will pass it down. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can you tell, tell me what we're looking at?
Yes, that's the end of the proposed park. That's the water at low tide with the, um, parts of the pier still existing, which are hazardous.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
My name is Susan Bonner. I live at 809 South Bay Haven, which is adjacent to the proposed park. As a longtime resident of Matthews County, I appreciate the real need to encourage tourism as a major source of income for the county. Much has been said already about our concerns with the narrow road, increased traffic, disposal of trash, and possible noise. Our neighborhood is so pleasant and peaceful that we're naturally afraid of any change upsetting a great status quo. So in closing, if there must be public access here, we request one that is small, easily maintained, and most importantly, sensible to its surroundings. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Can you hold on one second? So at the last Planning Commission meeting, I had put out an invitation to some of the public that was there to, to come up and meet with some of the Planning Commission members. I'd passed out my number, and nobody took me up on that. And some of the, some of the citizens that got up and spoke against it said they would be open to compromise. So can you tell me what that means to you?
Compromise?
In this, in this respect to this project, are you, and anyone else that wants to speak on that, we will, you know...
Well, you know, it's, obviously, it's a beautiful spot.
Yes.
It's, um, I walk there every day and enjoy it, and I think that everyone should be able to do that, and they have been doing that, but in an informal way. I guess my concern is that it, I don't see how, if you did a small project, which had been discussed, a few picnic tables, and a place where people could fish from the bank, because it's, obviously, it's not safe for swimming, obviously, then that's the kind of thing that no one has any problem with, I don't think, if that must be the case that a park is made.
So, so no boat trailers, no major traffic, maybe a little kayak launch, a little handicap place for, little short handicap pier, that's the things I've been hearing from...
I understand, yes. Though I watch people take their kayaks and canoes down to the end of the street, dump them in the water, pull them out when they're done. They usually park on the side of the road because they don't normally go in where the driveway is. But I think that to have anything of major impact would just be pretty unnerving for everyone, and again, it goes back to the comprehensive plan, that we want a tranquil surrounding, and if we can somehow work that out, that would be better than having something big and very impactful.
About pavilion and bathrooms. And I'm just throwing things out, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but you said you were open for compromise, and that kind of like, I was thinking, let me ask her, you know, what you're thinking, because I understand the neighbors, and I understand this is not what they signed up for when they bought, when you guys bought down there, but...
Yes, sir.
The other thing is, we have a parks and parks where the regulations, if it was designated a park, the sheriff's department could come down there and monitor it and make sure that, you know, we have a music ordinance. I know that I've heard nightmares about people coming down there, parking late at night, doing drugs, passing out, and maybe you could speak on that, because that was a little more than, but, so we've, we've heard a lot of nightmares about what's been happening. So...
And I, I, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm kind of positioned, from where we are, to kind of see everything. I'm really the one who sees most of everything going by. And it's a concern that, that we maintain as much, basically, back to the tranquility as we can.
I understand. Commission, does anyone else have a question at this point?
I got something.
Mr. Morgan?
I noticed that there's been several comments made about a ramp, and my whole life, there's never been a ramp down there, and I grew up in this county, so I don't think that there's an intention to ever put a ramp there, to my knowledge, unless nobody's said anything to me, so it certainly, I understand that somewhere, y'all have read that ramp, the word ramp, and I don't have any intention of putting a boat ramp down there, myself. I understand your concern with that, for sure, so, all right.
Mr. Riddle?
Am I on? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your comment. What happens if we don't turn it to a park? What happens to the land? And, Mr. Chairman, what you just suggested is that there have been people there, parking there, because there's no sign that says, "No parking after dusk," or anything like that, but what happens to the property if we don't turn it to a park? Does it remain as is, with people using it without authorization or any oversight from the police or anyone else? But what happens then?
That's a good question. I can't answer, I can't answer that question. Only the Board of Supervisors would, it's not designated as a park, it's a county-owned parcel. Now, maybe they could take steps to...
Mr. Chairman.
Fence it in, hold on one second, fence it in, put a gate up, but I think that's totally up to the Board of Supervisors. Uh, Mr. Riles?
Mr. Chairman, important procedure.
Yes.
We're not in discussion period, we're in comment period. If Mr. Riddle has a question for the person speaking, that's fine. If anybody else on this commission has a question for the person speaking, that's fine, but this isn't a discussion period, this is the public comment period.
I hear you loud and clear.
I'm sorry.
You are, you are correct, and I thought that's where you...
Ma'am, you didn't, ma'am, you didn't do anything wrong.
Oh, okay, thank you.
No.
May I jump back in?
Just point of assertion, he's correct. Mr. Riddle, if you can ask a question?
My question is, what would you foresee doable with a property if it doesn't become a park? What, do you have any concerns if it's not a park, with some of the questions that the chairman asked you and some of his, what he's seen?
I think...
Thank you.
I, I understand the county's need to have as much income generated for the county, and that's what tourism does. I mean, that, I may be wrong, but I assume that's the greatest outlying other than taxes and things like that. But if, if, if we could figure out a way to have some conservation group or some other, I just don't know what the answer is to that, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, but I think that surely we must be able to come to some agreement. All righty. Thank you.
I know I put you on the spot, but thank you so much. Thank you, we appreciate that very much. Ms. Kelly, next.
Helen Bedford.
And Ms. Helen might be ready to go now, since you heard the last one, okay. We might, the same question could be asked, if you could answer it at the end, would be great.
Hi, my name's Helen Bedford. I am the executive trustee after my father, Tom Edwards. He's the current executive trustee of 107 Millstone Lane. I am deeply troubled by this because we've already found paraphernalia on our property, which is across the street from the said property that's in, for this park. We, there's increased traffic, we've had our sign knocked over, the Millstone Sign Lane has been knocked over several times, we've had to put it back in ourselves. My dad's ninety years old, and he can't do it, so that makes it me doing it, because no one else wants to fix the sign, because it's not a public, or it's not a, I don't know what it is, but VDOT doesn't take care of it. This is a bad idea on all levels. I don't even know what to say to convince you, but I believe a green space, if you look across the street where our property is, it's been a green space for many, many years, and that's what this should be, a green space. The county's already knee-deep, real high in troubles, and doesn't need any more trouble, in my opinion. But we've lived on this island for many years, while others, including my family, or some residents have lived on the island for many years, while my family has lived on the island for centuries. And this is something that we are trying to preserve and keep as a nice place. Increased traffic is not going to have that. The road is not built for it, as you've heard everyone say. The environmental impact on our oyster grounds, which doesn't seem to bother anyone, that this is going to create a problem with the tidal pond on John Hall's property, on the property where Phyllis lives, they just reseeded the oyster ground. We're trying to create a green space, a healthy part of the Chesapeake Bay, trying to keep The sheriff's department is already overstretched. I was at the meeting last month where they're talking about needing more SRO officers. They cannot afford people to go down there to maintain this, to keep people off of it, and to abide by the rules of after dusk. They can't do that. I totally got off my track because of the past, the last comment, so anyhow.
I, I, I'm not trying to offend you, we're just trying to look at every angle. We were asked to look at this from the Board of Supervisors, and that's what we, so the questions, you know, they're coming, the way they're coming, and green space, what, a green space that all...
The way it is right now is a, is a green space.
Green space with picnic tables?
I mean, I would prefer a resident to live on it, if you're asking me, a resident, so that the county can have some taxpaying people on there, collecting money, because the county needs money. I'm just saying.
Yes, they do.
This is a bad idea.
Thank you.
I don't know how else to tell you.
I appreciate you very much. Next.
That's the only names I have on the list.
All right. Do, do we have any other speakers who would like to speak? This is... Uh, this lady first, and then you'll come up second. Ms. Koch? Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Eileen Koch, I live on Oak Point Road.
And if you could pull that down.
Shorty.
Yeah.
Don't need to push anything. I live on Oak Point Road in Hudgens. One of the things that you brought up a few minutes ago was compromise, so I'd like to address that a little bit. Gwinns Island, obviously, is surrounded by water. It lacks a public location for a family picnic. You can't enter the bay, launch a kayak or anything if you don't personally own property right there. And I think we need to remember, not everybody has personal waterfront access. And we are, our biggest asset in this county is waterfront access. The hole-in-the-wall concrete ramp with its powerboats is a dangerous place to try to launch a kayak. Edwards Creek Landing is used by commercial fishermen, that doesn't have a good place to launch a kayak or a paddleboard. That said, there is no public place anywhere in Gwinns Island, or in Hudgens, to get in the water with any of that kind of equipment. The comprehensive plan says that the county should continue to promote public access and appropriate facilities along the shorelines. Matthews County already owns this. The property's on a state-maintained road, and it's quiet, and so on, it's a quiet access to the water. There's been a lot of talk about what could go there. From what I have seen, the proposed plan is very simple. No trailer parking, a very small parking area, and a small private, a small, not private, I'm sorry, a small pier that includes a kayak launch, hopefully with some handicap accessibility. That would be a real asset for this county. The county was once a private residence, it had an extensive pier. The owner there had a legal right to have multiple powerboats, to keep lights on all night, to play music, let dogs run free, all of that. That had an impact on neighbors. But as a public park, governed by the park ordinance, that would keep this property at a low impact. There would be limited hours, no alcohol, dogs must be leashed, late-night noise, and lights would be controlled. The park ordinances would be enforceable by our sheriff. Therefore, making this a small park, this is not supposed to be something grand, I believe, would be in the best interest of all the residents in Matthews County, and would not have a real negative impact on the people at Gwinns Island. I have a letter written by Jan Towne, she became ill and couldn't come. Can I read that, or just...
You have twenty-six seconds.
I only have time to read it.
Oh, okay, you can pass it to Ms. Kelly, and we can get a copy of it. Thank you. Okay, you can come up.
My name is Jerry Ligon, I live at A38 Gwinsville Road. My property joins this proposal tonight, by about fifty feet. I think Mr. Hall and I share big concerns. A couple of things, I wasn't going to speak tonight, because I think everybody addressed the concerns that most people have that live on that road, and maybe even live on the island. But I wanted to mention that, about five years ago, my wife broke her ankle. And she broke her ankle because she was walking on the main road out there, not on the small road. And two cars were coming, and she stepped over, like, one foot, and fell in the ditch, and broke her, broke her ankle. I think that is probably a safety concern that I really see as being a problem, because I know many of my friends continually walk on that road, and they feel like that it's not wide enough for traffic, particularly if you have two cars, or two trucks with a trailer, and they're trying to pass, somebody's riding a bicycle, somebody's walking on the road, something is going to give. And it's not, not very safe. The other thing is that my wife and I own, or rent, lease from the state, the oyster grounds just off the front of that. And so, you know, we're talking about people, you let a camel's head in your tent, and you say, well, I don't see a ramp going in there, I don't see this doing that, I don't see this. And what happens is, it goes from one thing to another, to another, to another, and it becomes a constant problem. My suggestion is this, the question is this, what would you do with that property, then? Well, what does the county do with all the properties they do own now? Who's in charge of watching those properties? And so, I would say, if we do nothing with that property, we would do the same thing that the county would do with a hundred, probably hundreds of parcels that they own on the water and in the county. So, the other thing is that, why, just because it's there, why do anything with it at all? Green space is what we need. I think green space was what the plan was for FEMA in the first place. Leave it alone, let it grow back to nature. We need more of that. It floods, I've seen it, I've seen people kayak in the front yard, all over that property. So, my suggestion is, leave it alone. Don't make something out of something that doesn't have to change. Don't force an issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ligon. Any other speakers who would like to come up? Mr. Hicks?
Richard Hicks, North Virginia. Public recreational access should not be placed in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And, picking up on a comment, it's sad to hear, we have to depend on tourism to fund our county. How pathetic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. Anyone else? I'm sorry, come on up.
Yes, Jamie Surface, 371 Gwinsville Road. I had no intention of speaking tonight. And, you know, the more I listen to my neighbors, my wife and I ride our bicycles down the road all the time, at least a couple of times a week down there. And, yeah, I get the point of the road being there. I worked at VDOT for almost thirty years, I understand how the roads work, and how, how things work there. But I think, really, the one factor that I haven't seen, and I'm fairly late coming to this discussion, and I'll admit that, so, and I may be wrong, but it seems to me, I've not seen any type of a plan from the county. The staff didn't really have much of a report for this either. So, I think that's been left it open to speculation on what the county wanted to do, or wants to do. And, you know, there seems to be a real misunderstanding between, you know, everything the county would like to do, and what the residents would like. As for me and my family, I would rather see it just left natural. We were just over at Urbana a couple of weeks ago, and they have a small linear park over there, I don't know if anybody's ever been there, two parking spaces right on the road, and a path down, no water access, it is waterfront, but no water access. But you can walk down there, and you can, you can sit on the bench and look. And it's just a natural area. Something like that might work, I don't know. But I think what the county needs to do, is the county needs to develop a plan before they start doing anything else. And let's have some discussion about what that plan looks like. Let's get something pen to paper, and get something down, and let everyone look at it. And I've been a part of many public hearings through the years, and that's the first thing we do, we put a plan on a sheet of paper, and we say, this is what we're proposing, what do you guys think? And then, before we ever spend any other money on it, before we ever do anything else, and I think that seems to be what's lacking here. Now, I don't know that for a fact, but that seems to be what's lacking here. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a little bit of lack of clarity, I would agree with you on that. Anyone else like to speak? All right, I will now close this public hearing. Do we have any discussion, or a motion? Mr. Wilton, you said something about a...
Yes, I have a motion. Before I make the motion, I want to say this. There are several concerns, I have several concerns about this project. First concern is width of the road. If it's too narrow for two cars to pass each other safely, then people bringing down boat trailers and that type of thing can be a disaster. I have been involved with widening a road in Hallford. And the final solution of the Commonwealth of Virginia was for all the property owners on both sides of the road, was to donate land for the widening of the road. Well, that didn't go over very well. So, I would say, the road width is a major issue that has to be examined. The other item that should be examined is the issue over a master plan, comprehensive plan for, for the parks, and, and the land that belongs to the county. There is some dissertation in the comprehensive book about that, but it's not very well-written, and it should be reviewed, and updated, and corrected. So, my comment, and my recommendation and motion, is to postpone this decision by the planning commission for at least thirty more days, until we can get some more information available to us. Because right now, we don't have available information.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman, and I have a comment.
Okay, so, Mr. Wilton made the motion to delay this over for thirty days for more information, Mr. Riddle got to it first on the second. And you can start our conversation, Mr. Morgan?
Honestly, Mr. Chairman, I think the biggest disservice that we did, and the board did, is the lack of information for these people that live down there. We've had a public hearing now on something, and they don't know anything, so they're bracing for the worst. And I certainly respect that. In their mind, they're getting ready to have a big old park down there, and a boat ramp, and, and I would certainly do exactly what they're doing, is brace for the worst. They're, we're having a public hearing to turn something into a park with no proposal of what the park will be. It's all open to speculation. So, unless you, as chairman, were privy to information that we weren't, and you know a little bit more maybe than we do, we don't know any more about what they're going to put down there than what they do, as citizens. And that's not good, because they should know before they had to come up here tonight and argue all of their good, their good points. And it's just, to me, this whole thing has been a disservice to the citizens, with the lack of information of what the actual plan is to go down there. Because, oh, it'd be foolish to try to put a boat ramp down that road. We got one right down the street. So, I would never be for a boat ramp down there, I'm not opposed to a small dock, but again, we don't have a plan. And the people that are in charge of a plan would be the board supervisors. And my, I mean, to me, I feel like we've done a disservice by having, wanting to make something into a park with no proposal of what the park's going to be. So, that's my problem with it.
I saw one of the board meetings, where I thought the Parks and Rec had made a, some type of a proposal to the board, or maybe it was one of the board members who said it, but you're right, we have no, you know, that's, I agree. I mean, you don't know what you're fighting, what's, how are you going to fight it? Any more comments before we vote?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Riddle?
I have some comments.
Go ahead, Mr. Rouse.
I'd just like to echo my fellow commissioners' comments on the lack of a plan from the county, as to what they proposed. This park looks like, how they're going to handle certain aspects, for example, how are they going to handle parking, how are they going to handle trash, how are they going to handle traffic? How are they going to handle the, the old pylons from the old pier that were there? How are they going to handle erosion of the beach? I think all these things, and a plan, need to be provided to this board, this commission, before we can even make an educated decision about anything on this. I would ask Mr. Wilton to amend his motion, if he's so willing, to state that this body does not take any action on this, until the board supervisor presents this body with a comprehensive plan of what the, what is going to be put down there at that location.
So, we were asked to see if it was in substantial accordance with the Matthews County comprehensive plan.
In my understanding, from the comprehensive plan, that there is really no specifics when it comes to Parks and Rec.
Well, we don't have a master plan on parks, but we do, it, I mean, there's so much in there for the parks, and then there's things in there, peace and harmony was spoken about tonight, that this development of a master plan, which we don't have to have, but we should have, we should talk to Parks and Rec about that. I will make that recommend, we should make that recommendation. The county should continue to promote public access and appropriate facilities along the waterways and shorelines. It just goes on, you know, the comp plan goes on and on about water access, water access, continue to work with VMS, continue to support, collaborate, Middle Peninsula of Chesapeake Bay. I mean, it just goes, the comp plan goes on and on, and I, but I agree, we don't have any direction. When we get a, when we get a resolution that says, hey, are we substantially in accordance with the comp plan, I would say, yes, but what does that mean? What does that mean to these, these citizens sitting out here? Bobby, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm here.
Did you get, can you, so, we have a motion on the floor to delay it over thirty days, and we, we're all kind of like, and I have asked this question before tonight, did Parks and Recs, or any one of the board members talk to you about what the game plan? I mean, I was told maybe a little small pier there for handicap, kayak, launch, and that was about it, right? Picnic tables, maybe a pavilion?
Right.
I mean, I know it sounds a little, it's not really big as it sounds, but what, what discussions did you have, and what, what's going on here?
Well, I wish I was brought into this conversation from the very beginning. This was Tim Tillage's, I think, he brought the plan to the board of supervisors, and I guess the board of supervisors decided that they're going to handle it from there without going through the, the channels that we normally go through with CUPs, or any kind of resolutions, or anything like this. It, the comprehensive plan, some people spoke about the comprehensive plan tonight. That's their interpretation. It does, it does say that you, so, this is quoting the comprehensive plan, not just what I think I read, quote from the comprehensive plan, "Use of waterfront land should be balanced to provide reasonable access points for the public and protection of the environment." If Matthews County owns this piece of property, which they do, and I've heard the public comments talk about green spaces, no difference between a park and green space. What you can do in a park, you can do in a green space. They're worried about traffic down there, or parking at night, they can do that in a green space. We should do something with this property, that would, that's a recommendation, but, you know, what we do with it is fine. I don't recall what Tim... I don't recall what Tim Tillage's idea was for this park. What, did it include the whole boat ramp? I don't recall. But, yeah.
Boat ramp is, excuse me, I'm sorry. The boat ramp is not even a consideration by anyone. Nobody's even talked about a boat ramp or even a longer pier. I think that was taken off the table. So...
But how would we know?
Right, well, you're exactly right. So, go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Andrade, and then I'll get to you, Mr. Riddle.
I think that's basically all I've, all I've got to say about that, yeah.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Hold on, Mr. Riddle?
The lighting in here is awful.
Yes, sir, thank you. I echo what everyone up here said. Thank you all for coming out. I know something this close to your heart and personal in your backyard. It's difficult to come up here and speak. It's difficult for me to speak at times, too. So, my only recommendation to the motion is perhaps, I think we're kidding ourselves at thirty days. I would maybe suggest hitting ninety or one hundred and twenty. The one thing that hasn't been identified, not knowing the scope of the work, what the heck is it going to cost and how the heck we going to pay for it? So, I think those are some additional vital ingredients have to be considered. So, again, my recommendation is kick it a little bit further down.
Well, we only have seventy days. So, I was just handed, hold on one second. I was just handed Mr. Nick Koch's email. He was chairman of the Park and Rec Committee. And it says, "Our vision is for a very low-impact park with limited parking, no trailer parking, a kayak launch with a handicap accessibility, a picnic area, and a small pier. We recommend some natural screening as a buffer." Let me see, it goes on to say the sheriff would be tasked with enforcing. That's the gist of it. And I think that's what I heard at a board meeting. Or maybe I even overheard Mr. Koch or his committee had come up with that. But it wasn't, it wasn't something that was proposed. So, that's a problem. Now, who, who's that?
It was me.
Mr. Morgan?
I would like, before we vote on this, not the motion that's on the floor, but before we take any action on this, personally, I think we owe it to the citizens to have some sort of drawing that shows exactly what the intent is. Not just an email that says, my, our intentions are this, our intentions are that. I respect that email and that individual's position. But I think it would go a lot further if the board, or the county, I should say, not just the board, provided some sort of drawing that they could put in a packet so that when these folks see it, they know exactly what's being talked about. And they're not, you know, maybe that's where, you asked about compromise earlier. Compromise starts when you know what they're trying to do. You can't compromise if you don't know what the plan is. So, I can sit here and say I'm not for a boat ramp, but it doesn't sound like there was ever an intention of having a boat ramp in that email. So, I would say we have got to have something in drawing and in writing that lets these people know so that we can come to the table and compromise. We can't compromise if we don't know what's on the table to compromise with. So, that's all I got.
I think you're looking for a plan of development. And so, has anyone, so I don't even need to ask the question. I think, I think the thirty days to start off with, Mr. Riddle, was... Has anyone, raise your hands if you've met with the Parks and Rec Committee? From, any of you citizens met with them or talked to them about this? And I see no, no hands. You did, and you did. You all, that's right. Okay, y'all discussed the plan of development?
We discussed what we wanted to, what we wanted to do. And we made a recommendation to board to relax.
Okay. Well, that's okay, I've got to be careful here. So, thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. So, we have, we have a motion on the floor. I think we need to get organized. I feel like, I agree, we, I saw some of this stuff, read some of this stuff. Most of the commissioners have not. So, who would be willing to meet with myself and a couple of commissioners and the Park and Rec from that community? From that community? Ones in the back, one, two, three, four, five, anybody up here? For a discussion on what they are proposing and maybe to get a plan of development? You do, okay. We're a little bit in the dark on this side. Okay, all right. So, I propose that we, Mr. Mead? Real quickly. Yes. Okay, are the commissioners willing, I can't anymore, dear. Commissioners willing to hold a workshop with the Park and Recs and some of the citizens? Or is that, that's a good idea, okay. So, anybody wants my number afterwards? I gave it out before, but I'll give it out again. Please call me so we can talk about this. And nobody here has made their minds up. Mrs. Edwards, I know you want to say something. I'm sorry, I did let them speak, so go ahead. I think it was Parks and Rec. And I think Mr. Tillage had talked to them. I can't speak for him, I cannot, but... So, some of the commissioners are willing to meet with the Park and Rec and the citizens. And if there's no compromise, there's no compromise. We take a vote, we send it up to the board of supervisors, and they make a decision. So, thank you. We can talk after the, after the meeting tonight or...
We're perfectly willing to compromise. And we've already talked about that with several people. And it's in writing, we have sent it to Janice Phillips and Tom Bowen on board. They know what we strongly object to.
I don't know why we didn't get a copy of that. I just don't understand it. Does anybody have a copy of that? Okay. So, we're going to take this vote and then we're going to take a five-minute recess. And then we will talk about it. I, we understand, it's emotional. We get it, we own property. And so, nobody's made their mind up here tonight. We have a motion on the floor to delay this over for thirty days and we have a second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Say aye. All opposed?
Nay. Nay.
Ms. Kelly, we have Mr. Mead is nay and Mr. Roush, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Roush? Is that correct, Mr. Roush? I couldn't see you. You are the nay? Are you the nay?
I am a nay.
Thank you, sir.
You're very welcome.
All right. Moving on. Matter of fact, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Our now call this planning commission back to order. Next on the agenda is the committee reports. The workforce housing committee. Mrs. Francis, did you want to start or Mr. Riddle? I know Ms. Francis said she had something to say. Mrs. Francis. Workforce housing committee.
Workforce housing committee, yes. We haven't had a lot of meetings, but we have spoke a few times. And there's still a lot, a long ways to go with all of it. But I just wanted to say a few things tonight about the housing supply shortage. So some of the things that we want to address in this housing supply shortage that the whole country is having to deal with, that may be helpful to the county, is one thing we need to do is identify what a tiny home is. And that has a lot of components to it as far as identifying lot size and house size and all other kinds of things that need to be addressed. And another way that we can identify is with a, we call them ADU, which is a accessory dwelling unit. And some of these ADUs help with the county's housing supply shortage. They can be a way to earn rental income and also to help family members. Some of these you might recognize, they call them ADUs, accessory dwelling units now, but they also like guest, could be like a guest house, mother-in-law suite that we all recognize, and could be a basement, apartment, or even remodeling a attic. But any of these things would certainly help with the current housing crisis that we have. And one of the other problems is certainly with the median cost that we have of buying a home now is around $350,000. That's terrible. I wouldn't like to think I had to do that. But most first-time homebuyers are finding buying a home is out of their reach. And even the cost of renting a home is almost ridiculous and difficult to find. We can't, just not anything out there and definitely can't afford. So the tiny homes and the ADUs could help, I believe, in this situation if the county would open up some of these avenues. And I don't think it's the complete answer to the housing shortage, but it's certainly a good start in the right direction to help our young people as well as our seniors.
Thank you, Mrs. Francis.
You're welcome.
Mr. Riddle? Mr. Mead, would you like anything to add to this? You're part of the committee.
I'm in total agreement. We've been working on trying to come up with guidelines for both ADUs and working with, and Rob will talk about our conversations with HRSD. The idea was if you could get it in the downtown area, it would make it more cost-effective and you could take advantage of the existing, you know, HRSD sewer system. So I'm going to turn it over to Rob to give more information about that.
All right, and we'll do the, we'll do the HRSD next after this, when I get what he's saying. Go ahead, Mr. Riddle.
No, I was just going to jump in. Thank you, Mr. Mead. Yeah, we're kind of waiting for HRSD because that's a specific path, I think, would be the most effective and the fastest. If we can't have that, be able to tap into that system, we have other directions to take. So we're kind of waiting for that and looking forward to that. I wish we went after you, but that's where we are. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Tom Bowen?
One possibility I would like the committee to keep in mind.
Put a microphone a little closer.
Is that better?
Yes.
One thing I'd like the planning commission and this committee to keep in mind, there are certainly different parcels in the area that maybe have access to HRSD. But the county does own the property right beside the high school where the old, where the fire station had planned to be. That's approximately eight acres. So that may be suitable, it may not be, but it's certainly property that the county already owns.
All right, thank you. That's included in the conversations with HRSD, isn't it, Mr. Riddle? So that committee consists of Janice Phillips, David Jones, Mr. Riddle, and was it Francis? Francis Minor. That's the HS, HRSD committee. And they, they have presented, how many properties have been presented to HRSD? And Janice, I'm catching you off guard, but five or six parcels? And that was including the school, the school. So HRSD has to agree to open them up for operation. And then, so that, so I know the county administrator, Mr. Riddle, don't let me step on your toes. Tell me, so the county administrators involved, you four are on the committee? And that's moving forward with HRSD possibly approving those areas within the sanitary district? Okay, all right. Can you come up, I hate to, you look like you're dressed for the occasion, so come on up. She's always dressed for it, okay. So, yeah, could you explain that to us so we have, at least have it on the record? That's what I'm trying to do.
Okay. What we've done for HRSD is we've given them a number of parcels, and I'm going to say it's maybe seven or so, that are, that are butt to the Hampton Road sanitation zone, if you will. And we've given them proposed number of housing units for each one of those. And they're to get back with us and let us know if that's feasible. And it added up to about 60 housing units.
Now, 60?
With different parcels that we had, we are aware of that, available for development.
And you guys, you all are trying to work within to see what the procedures are on the bigger parcels. I know I've had people call me about bigger parcels for development, and that would require pump stations. And those pump stations would have to be approved by HRSD and paid for by the developer, which could be in the range of $500,000 to $700,000.
Sure. What we're talking about is just adding on to the existing system.
The existing, yeah, right, okay. All right, thank you so much. Mr. Riddle, you have anything else to add to that? So, okay, so your committees are working hard. I think within a month or two, we're going to have a whole lot more answers than we do questions. I know they're working hard constantly on this. Mr. Riddle? Okay, thank you. All right, that's two committee reports. Mr. Andrade, I'm sorry, commissioners, do y'all have any questions of the committees? All right. Mr. Andrade? I'll come back to you. I'll come back to you. Unfinished business, discussion of the exempt of the Matthews County Board of Supervisors from the zoning and subdivision ordinance. It was laid over last meeting for up to 60 days. I put it back on the agenda. It is now, some of that stuff is now in the public eye of lawsuits, evictions, preliminary hearings. I, I, I believe that the majority of this planning commission does not believe in exempting the board of supervisors from the Matthews County zoning ordinance and subdivision requirements. So, and several of y'all have asked me, why don't we go ahead and vote? Well, if you all want to make a motion, we'll, we'll, we'll take that motion and we will have discussion. And if you want to vote tonight, we can do that. We can put it to bed. With all the dates being put out so far, it's no sense in, I don't think it's any sense in talking about it anymore. Do I have any, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that the Matthews County Board of Supervisors will not be exempt from zoning and subdivision requirements.
Do we have a second? Second. There were motion by Mr. Wilton and a second by Mr. Roush. Do we have any more discussion than what we had last month? We had quite a bit. So it's open for discussion. Okay, here are no discussion. Ms. Kelly, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Morgan?
Aye.
Mr. Roush?
Aye.
Mr. Mead?
Aye.
Mr. Wilton?
Aye.
Ms. Minor?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Mr. Meeks?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Aye. That is unanimous vote to inform the board of supervisors that we recommend against them being exempt from the subdivision requirements. Is that right, Mr. Wilton? Did I, did I, I should have repeated that motion. But everybody understands and we got it. Thank you, sir. All right, agritourism. Mr. Andrade?
Aye. All right, so this is another topic that's come up several times. And staff has recommendation vis-à-vis agritourism. Let me give you some definitions of it, what it, what it is, what it's not, what Gloucester County is doing with it, and what staff proposes to have y'all vote on. All right, the Code of Virginia defines agritourism as defined in section 3.2-6400. There's several different things that agritourism defines, but, so I'm going to go through all of them. Agricultural products, that's the definition underneath agritourism. Means any livestock, aquaculture, poultry, horticulture, floriculture, viticulture, civil culture, and other farm crops. That's an agricultural product, according to Virginia's agritourism definitions. Agritourism itself means any activity carried on a farm or ranch that allows members of the general public for recreational entertainment or educational purposes to view and enjoy rural activities, including farming, wineries, ranching, horseback riding, historical, cultural, harvest your own activities, which is very broad, or natural activities and attractions. Any activity in agritourism, agritourism activity, whether or not the participant has paid for the activity. An agritourism professional means any person who is engaged in the business of providing one or more of the agritourism activities, whether or not he is compensated. Farm or ranch means one or more of these areas and lands used for the production of, production, cultivation, growing, harvesting, and processing of agricultural products, which I've already defined. Inherent risks, there, the state code talks about that with respect to agritourism activities. Means that those dangers, dangerous conditions are an integral part of agritourism activity, including certain hazards, surface, subsurface conditions, natural conditions of land, vegetation, waters, the behavior of wild and domestic animals, and ordinary dangers of structures and equipment ordinarily used in farming and ranching operations. Inherent risks of agritourism activities also include potential of the participants to act negligently in a manner that contributes to the injury of themselves or others, including falling, failing or following, failing to follow instructions given by the agritourism professional or failing to exercise reasonable caution while engaging in agritourism activities.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I think we have all of that. Just your research, I think the commissioners had that rest of it in a pack. Your research and maybe any suggestions would be, would be great. I mean, you can shorten this a little bit. Thank you, sir.
You want me to shorten this one?
You want your, you know, your recommendations and your research that you've done.
Okay, so Gloucester defines agritourism, and I'll short form it. They include everything verbatim that the Virginia code includes. However, they also add a few things. They also talk about what agritourism is not. And that includes in their ordinance, they say, "Any activity shall not be deemed as agritourism activity solely by reason or taken place on a farm or ranch." Agritourism activity does not include the following types of activity, along, among others, not specifically listed, the rental of the farm or the ranch, portion thereof, or events such as weddings, wedding receptions, parties, retreats, and other activities, unless such activities themselves consist primarily in participation in the view of the agritourism activity or two activities involving motor vehicle competitions and other activities involving the use of motor vehicles other than farm vehicles. All right, so they've added some information as to what agritourism is not. Now, where is agritourism permitted in Gloucester? Well, almost everywhere. According to the map, agritourism, and I'm not sure how your map turned out. I know you can't see mine. The lighting in my, my room is awful. But agritourism is permitted in, well, let me back up. Gloucester parses out their zoning districts much differently than we do in Matthews County. So there's a, there's a difference there. So we are going to be comparing apples to oranges. This is one of the reasons why I didn't want to compare the two. But agritourism in Gloucester is permitted in AGRC1, which is rural countryside. That's the grayish color. Now, I'm not sure if your map came out very good, but this is located in the northern part of the county, most of the northern part of the county, and along New York River. It's also allowed in RC, which is rural conservation. This is the dotted purple section. There's plenty of space there, which is allowed in the central part of the county, along the waterfront, and by special exemption. I'll explain what the special exemption is with, with respect to Gloucester. But the special exemption, it's kind of like a CUP, is allowed, agritourism is allowed in residential C2, which is the Bay conservative, this is the pale green, and in C1, suburban countryside, which is orange. Now, there are other places in Gloucester where they do not allow agritourism. SF1, MF1, MH1, B2, B1, B4. But those are very limited, according to this map. Basically, you can't do agritourism along the 17 corridor, pretty much. There are, it's allowed pretty much everywhere. Now, they do this thing called special exemption for agritourism, and not just agritourism, but other types of activities. And what that means is that it's kind of like a CUP light. What they do is they fill out a CUP or their special exemption. But it only has to go through the planning commission. Does not have to have a second meeting up to the board of supervisors. So if the planning commission in Gloucester says, yeah, this special exemption is good, they're good, they don't have to go any further with that. So, continuing on. As I said before, most of the county allows for, of Gloucester, allows for some type of agritourism. It's not allowed in zones, business zones, MF, multifamily, or single-family areas, which is mostly in the 17 corridor. As Matthews County does not have zoning districts, staff, staff's proposal would be to define agritourism as stated in the Code of Virginia 3.2-640 and allow by right all but in the R1 in our districts, R1, B1, and B2, industrial district, and not allow also in the village mix use.
All right, I can agree with that, but I would also like to have what Gloucester has in, "The rental of a farm or ranch or portion thereof," now, this is, this is, does not allow, "the rental of a farm or ranch or portion thereof for events such as wedding, wedding receptions, parties, or retreats," that means overnight, "and other activities, unless such events themselves consist primarily of participation in a view of the agritourism activity." I would like to add that. Commissioners, do we have any more discussion on this? Bobby, you, you're finished with your presentation at that point, right?
No, sir, I'd like to tag on to what you just said. We don't in any of our ordinance, any other ordinance, define something what it's not. It seems a little kludgy to me to add, to disallow things when inherently it's not, it's not even permitted. So it's, it would seem to me for staff, you would be, I know, singling out certain types of activities when it, it's not included in the first place. When you do that, you're going to have to go through all of the ordinance and say what, what things are not. In, in our ordinance, we In in our ordinance, we read it as if it doesn't specifically say you can do it, you ain't doing it. So um. Uh adding, adding, you're adding things, uh what something is not is not a recommendation I would make.
So, okay. Being not allowed in the, for some reason, I don't have your final page. I did have, oh, thank you. There, there you go. Okay. So, I've had a long day, so help me out here. Wedding venues, uh parties, retreats, are they allowed in R one?
Um, I'd have to look at the ordinance, but but.
Or single fam- are they allowed in single family?
But our ordinance does address that very thing, a special event. They might be allowed by right. I don't have that right in front of me. I look it up. But uh some are allowed by right, and some are allowed by CUP. Where it's not mentioned in our ordinance, it's not allowed.
Okay.
We don't, we don't write in our ordinance, say, you're not allowed to do this, you're not allowed to do that. We say what you are allowed to do. We say what you can do by CUP. If it's not there, you're not allowed. Because because then you could say, well, you can't have an ant farm. You don't, well, we don't have that in our ordinance. Well, we gotta put it in there. So you you're kind of writing an ordinance for the negative. And that's why I I think it's, it becomes a little uh kludgy to add what agritourism is not. Just let's define it what it is, and that's what it is.
Okay, I I, okay. I I I feel okay with that. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Andre?
I got a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Who dreamed this up?
State of Virginia.
The state of Virginia.
Well, that's Richmond.
Hold on. But then we had a complaint, Bobby had a complaint on this three or four months ago, and other counties have it, and uh Matthews needs to be protected because it, we do have a state ordinance. So we need to include this in our ordinance, and with any changes or modifications within the law that we can do to protect our citizens. So that's where I came from.
Here is the concern that I have. First of all, of on this board, I'm the only one that has cattle. And I have people down at my place looking at our cows and feeding them all the time. Doesn't bother me a bit. They're, they, no problems at all. Richmond has come out, this, where are they gonna stop? Where are they gonna, because he's talking about restrictions, which he hasn't got in here yet, but the way they're talking, it sounds like the restrictions are forthcoming. And I am, as one of the few agriculturists in this group, I am opposed to this. This is, this is absurdity.
Hold on, Bobby, hold on, Bobby. Yeah, I I don't think that affects you, but it does affect waterfront properties, business properties. And we talked about this, having pigs in the courthouse next to food lines is not the greatest idea, right? I I don't know. This is state code. We need to incorporate it. We need to um. We're not making anything any stricter. The only thing I was worried about is the campsites and the other things that I talked to Bobby about. Go ahead, Bobby.
Okay, um, to address one of the commissioners' uh concerns, uh the state is promoting agritourism. So if you have cattle, you're protected. If someone goes onto your, your property, feeds the cow, or feeds the bull, and the bull charges them, and it it hurts them, okay, well, that's on, that's on the person who was trying to feed the bull or pet the bull. So agritourism, if you have cattle and you have uh neighbors who want to feed them, state's great with that. They want that.
Yeah, this is agritourism. This is not your personal pets, you know.
Well, yeah, that's.
That mama won't let you eat, Mr. Mr. Wilton. You understand? I get you. Commissioners, any other, any other um questions or comments? All right, can you run this by the county attorney and bring it back next month, and we will, shall vote on this?
So just to be clear, you want to adopt simply what the state, the state defines agritourism?
Plus your, your, plus your modifications to our zoning classifications.
Done.
That's what the commissioners have pretty much agreed. That's what we want to see. Thank you, Mr.
I will, I will write it up and uh get it vetted.
Get it vetted. Thank you, sir. All right, the next thing is, we won't talk about it uh too much. We, we thank you for your update on the um CUPs and where where you're at with it. Uh, the the one, the one, uh, yeah, I don't, I I think we're in good shape on that.
I do, I do have a question though, or a a comment for y'all to mull over. Uh, not mentioning any names, but the applicant for um uh three CUP eighteen has come into my office three times. I've put him on hold. He is willing to um update his permit, but he doesn't, but for financial reasons, he's not able to. And I said, hold on a second. That's fine. I understand, and I, and I believe I recall that you uh set up or the planning commission set up a committee to help these people. Has anybody reached out?
We're gonna get to that, we'll get to that in a minute. But so what you're saying is, you're saying is the applicant wants to put in an application. He um, he 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 has to get the finances to do so, and then he wants to get, he wants to get right. Or he wants to come back to the planning commission and see if we will approve him for an extension or a new CUP.
Is there something we can, yes, yes, sir. Is there something we can do for him with respect to the fee? Waive it?
We don't have the right to do that. The board of supervisors does. Um, we we will, we can talk about that uh sometime very soon.
Okay.
Um, if it's not in the ordinance, I I think we're stuck with that at this point. But we we we'll see what the, and 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 I'll talk to you about it. I'm willing to help too also.
Okay.
So, that one is good. The, so that, since we, since we're here, Mr. Hunter has not contacted you at all?
Uh, I sent Mr. Hunter a letter to the address where the um, the trailer was. It it was returned to me. I sent it to him another known address, so he's got another letter out there. Um, with respect to three CUP seventeen, that NOV has gone out and um waiting for them. And that one went out recently because I had to be vetted and.
That's a violation, Leonard?
Yes, sir.
All right. And you have, I I noticed at the last board meeting, the attorney asked you to contact her on that particular one. Y'all in contact?
I was given permission to just go ahead and go forward, so I.
Okay. All right. Uh, Mr. Meeks, you have a question for him?
Yeah, Bobby. What are the fees associated with the renewal for Mr. Blake, the total fee structure?
It's uh three hundred and fifty dollars. And I told him, I told him myself, I'll pay for it if if we can't come to some kind of workaround on this.
Yeah, we'll talk about that later. That is um.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a tough, it's tough. But but I I I apologize, committee. I was gonna come to you in this discussion, but I I negated to do that. So Mr. Roush and Mr. Morgan, would you like to tell us what you found out about any, any help for these um CUP, uh, CUP uh citizens that the CUP has run out, and we're trying to figure out how to get them in compliance and to also help them?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Uh, unfortunately, the answer to that is no. So the subcommittee uh did some extensive research uh for any federal or state assistance that can be provided to these individuals to see if that they can uh get a more permanent uh residence on their property. Um, for the federal, you know, if they had lost their home to a flood, uh, there's FEMA that's available. Um, unfortunately, I I know uh CUP eighteen did not lose their residence due to a flood. I'm not sure about CUP twenty, but I haven't heard uh that it was due to a flood. Um, so then we, you know, at the state level, it used to be called HUD, but uh they changed, the Virginia changed it to Department of Housing Authority, I think. And um they have programs for people who have problems with their existing home, uh but neither one of these uh requests have existing homes. So finally, we uh went to the local social services and uh I spoke with um the director of social services there, and uh her name is Tiffany Gordon. And I asked her if there was any um programs or services that uh Matthews Social Services could uh help these applicants with um getting more permanent residence on their property. And I'll, if if you allow me, Mr. Chairman, I'll just read word for word her response. Okay. Uh, good morning, Mr. Roush. Our agency does not have any programs that can assist with housing, either providing building or refurbishing. This situation has come up in the past, and previous planning commissions have renewed permits because of it. There is no affordable housing in any locality, much less Matthews. I have left a message with, I have left a message this morning with Bay Aging to see what they can offer. Their housing waitlist for senior citizens is eight to ten years. Uh, then she just goes on to say that she's available uh for further discussion if we so choose. So, as I said at the beginning of this report, the prognosis is not good for these applicants. And it's the recommendation of this subcommittee that we uh grant the renewals of CUPs.
Thank you, Mr. Roush. Mr. Morgan, do you have anything to add to that, or are you good with this?
No, I'm good with it. Like you said, we had extensive conversation about this, and um it's, it's a little unfortunate, you know, some of the conversation we had growing up, you know, down the road from Mr. Blake. It's in in understanding his situation personally, uh it's kind of sad that one, there's no help out there, and two, we're potentially, we're hopefully gonna get these people back in, but like he said, it's, it's, it's our recommendation to grant them a renewal. Um, nobody wants to see anybody without a home. And to not give them the renewal would be exactly what we would be doing, is saying, hey, we don't want you to be in that home. We want you out of there. Um, and and I don't, I don't agree with that. Um, no matter what their circumstances are personally, it it definitely, um, it's a hard thing to do that to somebody. So uh I understand ordinances, I understand we're following the guidelines and ordinances presented to us, and and we have to respect them. But uh, again, my, my recommendation is, same as our committee, is to grant their renewal and uh keep them in their homes and uh do anything we can to help with that process.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morgan. They they've got to make an application first, and we will have to try to figure that out. Hold on, Mr. Andre. Mr. Mr. Meeks?
Bobby, with the discussion, uh, Mr. Riddle, Mr. Cook, and myself will pay the.
We don't, we don't, we don't want to make that problem.
Okay.
Yes, I understand. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Andre, uh, go ahead, Mr. Mead. Mr. Andre, you can keep taking it in, and then you can, you let it all out. Go ahead, Mr. Mead.
Are we in the, the same situation with all three, or is my understanding, one of them may be some extenuating serps, you know, a different situation?
I think each one's a little bit different. Uh, the, the, uh, let me see, well, just talk about numbers here. CUP eighteen, I believe it had a house fire, and they had moved into a uh temporary um uh travel trailer, so they could figure out what they could do to either repair the home or build another one. So that has expired. The CUP has expired. I think he was given five years to to make something happen, so that hasn't happened to this point. Uh, CUP twenty, um, uh, the house was dilapidated, mother passed away, this extenuating circumstances um there. But he was asked to put that travel trailer behind the, his, the existing dilapidated house and to also do pumping haul. So some things there we need to be checked on. The CUP seventeen, three seven, C, three CUP seventeen, they're just completely out of compliance. They're not the original CUP requester. The uh, yeah, that's just complete um nonconforming, nonconforming uh to the original CUP uh request, and not this, not their, not the homeowner, so.
Okay. Uh, and that, that one I understand. The other two, but my only concern on some of the others is that we have some restrictions that if we approve that, that they need to maintain the property as far as, you know, landscaping and trash and you know, I I drove by all three of those properties and and it's, it's not just a question of 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 uh income. There's also, you know, cleanliness and uh curb appeal issues. So if we could make that part of the approval process, I'd be in favor of it.
Yeah, I I I for one agree a hundred percent. Um, you know, we can help you, but we, you know, we, you gotta help yourself in certain.
Right, right.
I agree. I I agree a hundred percent. Um, Mr. Andre, do you have anything else to?
Uh, yes, sir. I just, uh, I was gonna ask the same thing that Mr. Me was asking. Does this uh, with the new motion out there, does this apply to all three of them? But I understand that that first one on the agenda is uh, we're gonna handle it as, as I've already handled it.
Okay, yeah, there's no motion on the floor tonight. You're giving us an update, and the committee has given us an update, and you will, you will update us again next month, correct?
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, yeah, yes, I will do that.
All right. Uh, commissioners, any, anything else to talk about on the uh past due CUPs or the expired CUPs? All right, thank you very much. Um, wanted to change to solar farms. I I'm not sure why that's on here, Bobby.
Um. Oh, yeah, I know why it's on there. Because I sent uh a, let's see, an email to uh Mrs. Wilson to send to our county attorney in the, in that conversation we had last week, you, you, me and Mrs. uh Wilson, um, that I added in for the utility use major, uh ground-mounted solar farm arrays are prohibited. Now, that's gonna come back to us as, you know, we can't do that. Then I'll have something for y'all to consider again. So that's why that's on it.
All right, all right. Um, so what's gonna happen is, I, I mean, the board gave you instructions to get with the attorney and uh change the language. So you're feeling like, uh, and I'm feeling the same way, prohibited. I I, so you're gonna get back with the attorney, and then you're gonna bring it back to the planning commission uh for a third time? It's just, okay.
Yeah, I know. If if she approves the language that she approved before the county attorney, and then she changed her mind, said, no, you can't do that, um, I don't, I give up. I'm, I'm doing, I don't know what to pick up this like. We're trying.
I watch it. It does get a little frustrating. We need to bring this.
Yep.
Yeah. So, 'cause y'all work together, and then when y'all come up with the solution. The whole goal is, from this planning commission's perspective, and commissioners, correct me if I'm wrong, we do not, we want to make it as difficult as possible, and I'll say it right to that camera, as difficult as possible to have ground-based solar in Matthews. We all agree, we don't have the land mass. We have a shortage of housings. We're talking about changing the ordinance for the shortage of the, of the, of the single family dwellings, uh possibly duplexes, lot sizes. I mean, they're, they're getting into a so we don't have the luxury of having all the extra land mass that Gloucester or Middlesex has. So we made that. So we made that plan as a commission, unless any commissioners want to speak up and state otherwise. No ground-based solar, major utility, ground-based solar, minor utility, a homeowner can still have it. They can have it on their roof, and they can have a small garden, you know, in their yard, correct? Are we on the same page? So please, if you could, if you could get back with the county attorney, and if she says it needs to come back to us, then either by order of the board of supervisors, or you can bring it back to us. I, but almost, we've already voted on it, yes, and sent it up, but the board has changed their language, so I would imagine that the board would need a resolution to send it back to us, and we would have to change the language that is agreed upon, but if you could preliminary, get the agreement presented to the board of supervisors for their approval, so we don't have to go through this anymore.
I know, I'm done with it too, but, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much for that. Planning directors report, what else do you have to report?
I've covered, no, I've covered everything I want to talk about tonight.
You had BZA, did we have BZA?
No, nothing from the BZA that's new, we didn't have a meeting last month.
Okay, all right. Any new business? Well, he was in a hurry to go. Okay, hello, Bobby, okay. No, no, no new business. Where you going? Speaker's off, your speaker's off, no new business. All right, he's on a business trip, isn't he, accounting, county paid trip, okay. Planning commissions requesting directors of their, guy who just left. Any, 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 any request of a zoning director, I'll get the message to him. I would like to request the grounds and maintenance director to come next meeting, to give us an update on the CIPs, where the money went, what took place with the capital improvements that we approved in 2025. So Ms. Kelly, I've already asked him, and he's said he'll come next month and give us, and I've already asked Bobby, or, you have a copy of the CIP that the board of supervisors changed when they were doing their budget, right, the final CIP? Okay, so we request him to show up next board, next, next month, along with the other things that we have, and I'm sure I'll have plenty for y'all by the time next month gets here. All right, we will now have our second public comment period, all the rules are the same that for the first, would anybody like to get up and speak? Seeing no one, we will close the second public comment period. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. All right, the ayes have it unanimously, thank you, everyone, it was a long meeting, I appreciate all your help. Thank you, Mr. Mead.
Thank you, guys.